Available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, are available online or at the Planning and Development Services Department, room 213. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. In addition, a copy of all staff reports and other relevant documents for the matters to be considered by the Planning Commission are included in a binder that is located on the dais and is available to the public for review. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cell phones may not be used in the chamber during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. Please note, the Planning Commission action today is final on the following items. Item 1.3, Special Permit 25040. Item 4.3, Special Permit 25042. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held October 29, 2025.
So moved, Campbell.
Second, Edens.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Feit?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Cruz?
Epstein.
No, you can't.
Oh, okay then, I. Was I there? Yeah, I was, okay.
And it's approved, five to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will now ask Shelley to read all the consent agenda items into the record. Once those are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Shelley, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
Item 1.1, Comprehensive Plan Conformance 25011, to review Estin Conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan to provide a conservation easement to preserve flood storage capacity in relation to approved Special Permit #1123D for the People Sitting Mission on property generally located at 110 Q Street. Item 1.2, Text Amendment 25013, to amend the Lincoln Municipal Code, Chapter 27.61.010, continuation of nonconforming use in Chapter 27.61.040, extension of enlargement to allow more flexibility for structural alterations for the reuse of existing buildings. Item 1.2, Special Permit 25040, to replace a nonconforming porch to the corner, in the corner front yard, with addition of stairs on property generally located at 2444 C Street, and this is the final action. Item 1.4, Street and Alley Vacation 25004, to vacate a portion of undeveloped right-of-way, previously intended for South Street, adjacent to property generally located at South 98 Street and South Street. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed on these items? Are there any expedite communication that took place or additional information you learned while visiting these sites to be disclosed? If there is anyone here wishing to speak on these consent agenda items, please stand and state that item.
Well, we do not see anyone here that would like to speak on the consent agenda items, so we would now entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda, Campbell.
Second, Edens.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Feit?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Consent agenda approved, five to zero.
There are no requests for deferrals, so we will now proceed to public hearings. Prior to staff making a brief presentation, each staff person should state their name, agency, and address. The applicant will then be requested to present their testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity for rebuttal. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members or included as part of the record, please provide them to the clerk. Each person testifying should state their name and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The clerk will use the light system to help aid your timing for your testimony. The lights will appear on the monitors provided. The clerk will indicate when you have one minute remaining to wrap up your testimony. The red light indicates that your five minutes have expired. Once the final minute has lapsed, the clerk will indicate that your time is up. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or to continue the public hearing. Shelley, please call the first public hearing item.
Item 4.1A, Comprehensive Plan Conformance 25010, to review Estin Conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a proposed conservation easement to preserve flood storage capacity and natural resources within the Pine Woods Plan Unit Development on property generally located at 6511 Pine Lake Road. Associated with item 4.1B, Change of Zone 08041G, to amend the Pine Woods Plan Unit Development to approve updated grading and drainage plans and hydraulic report to allow expansion of an existing building by 5,760 square feet, expansion of existing contractor services use in the floodplain, also on property generally located at 6511 Pine Lake Road. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed on these applications? Are there any expedite communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
Okay, good afternoon. I'm Jacob Schlangy, Planning and Development Services Department, 555 South 10th Street. I'm going to be talking to you today about two applications that are associated with each other, the Change of Zone, which is an amendment to an existing PUD, and the Comprehensive Plan Conformance, which is for a conservation easement on the area of application. So the application to amend the PUD is to expand an existing contractor services use on this property, and the expansion would be to the south end of this building here, adding 5,760 square feet of commercial floor area on this lot. The application also does include upgrades to the grading and drainage plans and hydraulic report, as this is in the floodplain, and the application for the conservation easement through the Comprehensive Plan Conformance is related to this application. So a little bit of history, this property was added to the existing PUD, the Pine Woods PUD, in January of 2019, along with the lots to the east, and at that time, the property, it's zoned R3 residential, but the proposal was to allow this contractor services use, which is not normally permitted in the R3 zoning district. This is a property that, it was deemed at that time that allowing that contractor services use would allow reasonable use of the property, given some of the existing constraints, and the PUD approved that use on this location and included a condition against further development in the floodplain on the slot as a condition of approval at that time. So the application now today is to expand the existing use there, which obviously would constitute additional development on this property, bringing the total floor area in the PUD to 21,135 square feet. So as part of that conversation with the application, to approve this expansion of use, there would be a conservation easement required due to the floodplain regulations, and so the conservation easement would prevent further development at this location as well in terms of expanding the existing use. Part of that floodplain requirement is the conservation easement over areas of compensatory storage, and so that Comprehensive Plan Conformance is proposed to address this easement. The exact boundaries of the easement have not been finalized yet. So the property that is proposed for this expansion had the limitation on future development in the floodplain, as well as these two properties to the east, back when the Change of Zone was approved in 2019 to add these to the PUD. The reason that the property immediately to the east was not included is because it's a city-owned property and is not subject to the same zoning requirements. So the last thing that I will say, the applicant has made an offer to voluntarily donate a portion of the property south of the water channel on the property to the city. This is not a condition of approval on this application. This was a voluntary suggestion, a gift of the property. Parks and Recreation has expressed interest in this, but again, it's not a condition of the application, and there would still be a conservation easement required due to the floodplain requirements. So with that, I would say the ultimate recommendation is conditional approval based on the conditions that are outlined in the staff report, because it does provide the applicant a reasonable use of the property and maintain the compatibility with the surrounding land uses, and that conservation easement would preserve the natural resources on the south portion of the property. So I'll take any questions now.
Testimony from the applicant?
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Mark Hunsaker, appearing on behalf of the applicant Franklin Drywall. I agree with everything that Jacob said.
May we have your address, Mark?
Sure, 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 300, sorry. We've been having some conversation prior to the meeting about the conditions of approval, and I want to just talk about two, just one condition, two conditions actually. Item 2.2, which requires adding a note that the conservation easement will be separated by at least a six-foot fence or series of posts from the outdoor storage area, should be eliminated, and I believe the planning department is in agreement with that. The other thing is in 2.5, where it requires that a note be added to construct a fence or series of posts, we'd like to eliminate the words "or" series of posts, and just say fence or posts, and add the language "at each point of deflection" to demarcate the area of the conservation easement. That allows for a line that isn't quite straight, but our intention is to make it a straight line so that we end up with a post on the east property line, a post on the west property line, so that everybody knows where the conservation easement starts. Conservation easement will allow for parking, but there are other uses that would not be allowed, and there needs to be some point of visibility for building and safety if there's some sort of complaint, or if they're out there just checking things, to see whether or not there are things that are within the conservation easement that are not allowed. So if you would make those changes, we would appreciate it very much, and with that, I'll answer any questions. Okay, thank you.
Do we have anyone giving testimony in support? Anyone giving testimony in neutral capacity? Any testimony in opposition? Do we have any questions for the staff?
Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I think it's just a matter of, do you agree with what he stated on removing those two, changing the one condition, removing the other condition?
Yeah, so I guess I'll start with condition 2.2, which was proposed to be eliminated. That really was duplicative in adding a note about the fence that's referenced later on in 2.5, and the initial inclusion of a six-foot fence, we don't really see that as being necessary. The six-foot height is really irrelevant to the purposes, which is to provide a visual demarcation of the location of the conservation easement. I think, you know, ideally, we want something that makes it very clear where the conservation easement is and where anything would be prevented in this conservation easement. So the reason for the language about a series of posts was just to really make that clear, but what they're proposing with the conservation easement, if it were to be a straight line, would ultimately result in two posts.
And you guys are okay with that?
I think ideally, we would have liked to see more demarcation, but I think that is something that is all right.
That was mine.
Okay.
I'm good, thank you.
Dick?
No, that was the same question.
That was my question.
Rebirth with one stone.
There we are.
Any other questions? Do we have applicant rebuttal?
Just point out that the language that I proposed allows for more posts if necessary. So at each point of deflection in that line, there would have to be a post if it's not a straight line, so.
All right. Shall we close?
Yes, I would move to a course of public hearing.
Second, Edens.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Feit?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
And I would move to approve Change of Zone 08041G with the two amendments on 2.2 and 2.5.
Second, Edens.
So would be any discussion?
Shelley? Is there discussion?
No.
No.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Feit?
Yes.
Rothenberg?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Approved, five to zero.
All righty, next item, okay, item 4.3, Special Permit 25042, to allow soil mining and excavation on property generally located at West A Street and Southwest 126th Street, and this is final action. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed on this application? Are there any expedite communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting any of this site to be disclosed?
Good afternoon. George Wesselhoff, Planning and Development Services Department, 555 South 10th Street. So this application location is the northwest corner of Southwest 126th and West A Street. The request is for soil excavation under Lancaster County zoning regulations. The property size is 12 acres. The area proposed for disturbance is eight acres. The applicant plans to excavate the clay from this property and haul it to their existing mining operations where they have been in place, mixing the clays for the brick manufacturing process. That existing mining facility is at Southwest 56th Street and West Claire Street. There are five homes within a thousandth feet of the proposed soil excavation. One of these homes has a driveway access onto Southwest 126th. The other homes have access onto West A Street. Both of these streets are gravel or rock-surfaced. There was a groundwater report from a groundwater hydrologist that was submitted, and that's required when proposed soil mining operations are within 1,000 feet of any off-site private well or within 2,000 feet of a community well. The report identified one private well within 1,000 feet of the proposed excavation area. In addition, there is a private well located in the vicinity, but at a distance greater than 1,000 feet, and so those well locations are, one is to the west at 12920 West A Street, and then the other one is further southwest on West A Street, and those are registered wells, information that's publicly available. So based on that information, the report indicated that there would be no detriment impact to the groundwater. It appears that there are unregistered wells within 1,000 feet, based on the fact that there's no rural water district in this area, and so the specific addresses are essentially the four houses that are closest to this intersection, and it was communicated to the applicant on October 29th that this additional information is needed because the regulations doesn't make distinction between registered and non-registered wells. At that time, they declined to provide the information. Recently, in the last few days, they did attempt to reach the owners of those four properties. They were able to only get information from one of them, 12755 West A Street, which is the southwest location or southwest home, and that information has not been incorporated yet into the hydrology report or reviewed by the Health Department. So the recommendation at this time is still the same, it's a recommendation to deny. Otherwise, the proposal meets all the criteria under the county regulations, and we do have Chris Schroeder and other staff here from Health Department today if there's specific questions on those aspects.
I know it's, sorry, excuse me. I know it's in the report, but can you show the image of their truck route?
Yes.
They planned to take? And when you're finding that, was there any concern, I didn't read any, there was no concern of that route and the quality of the roads? And potentially, how many trips might be occurring?
Yeah, so it was noted in the staff report that the truck route will extend from the site to Southwest 126th to West A Street, and then it'll go to Southwest 140th, and then from Southwest 140th to West Van Dorn, and then to their other location on Southwest 56th Street. And this was reviewed by the county engineer. In addition, of course, we notified property owners nearby and posted a zoning sign, and there's been no concerns expressed respect of the truck route.
In your opinion, would it be better to defer than deny? Vote to deny today?
Right, the recommendation of staff would be to defer, continue to the next Planning Commission, assuming the applicant would provide the updated hydrology report, which I don't want to speak for the applicant, but I believe they will speak in disagreement on that.
Thank you, George.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Tim Gergen, 1010 Lincoln Mall, Clark Anderson. We have a few items that we wanted to talk about. It's a mining permit that we have a lot of conditions, and we agree with all the conditions. We really have an issue with our denial. Yankee Hill Brick, been a private business within the county for many, many years. It's been operating mining mines all across the county. We do have an issue, take reason, with the staff report, I guess the issues with a lot of the justification for a recommendation. It is a law to register your well. That's how we get our information to write the reports. If the well is not registered, we cannot fathom information, we cannot make it up, we have to make engineered reports based on factual information. We garnered one well that has registered within the required area. There are four other houses out there. I have several relatives on ranches out in western Nebraska. They don't have wells. They bust their water in, or they just have houses out there that just use storage units. They don't have wells. So for the county to hypothesize that these properties even have wells, and then to do a denial claim based on a hypothesis seems ludicrous to us. But we will entertain the lunacy and keep going with this application and testify a little bit further. So George's justification for recommendation in the code, and you can see it further down here, does not say whether it's registered or not, it just says wells. And in the law, if the well is registered, the well is there. If the well is not registered, in our eyes, it's not there. That's where we're at, and that's kind of the issue that we've been coming up with. So the county wanted us to go out and contact these property owners. Well, really, no one has phones. A lot of the, two of the properties appeared vacant to us anyway. Greg, the owner of the mining operation, went out and made attempts. Here are the addresses of those property owners, and here are the locations.
Can you zoom out a little bit?
Yeah. Too much.
Yeah, you're okay.
1200 Southwest 126th Street, no one answered at the door. Some other neighbors stated that they had moved to Arkansas quite some time ago. This is the property that looked a little vacant. This property here, 12800 West A Street, no answer at the door. Appears no one lives there. It's just a trailer. Looked in the windows, a lot of storage, just full of storage, so I think the owner's using it as storage. This is the property where we did have a well registration, and we provided that well This 12545 West A Street, owner was there, didn't know any information about his well. A lot of people don't. This property here, 12800 West A Street, no answer at the door. Appears no one lives there. It's just a trailer. Looked in the windows, a lot of storage, just full of storage. So I think the owner's using it as storage. This is the property where we did have a well registration, and we provided that well information. This 12545 West A Street, owner was there, didn't know any information about his well. A lot of people don't. I mean, if the well's been there for a long time, it's good operation. We don't know what it's like. He didn't know anything information about his well. This owner, we were able to contact, and this is the one, he was drilled in 1977 by hedges. Moza replaced the pump a few years ago. At the time, it was 205 feet to the bottom, 54-foot water level, and 105-foot pump level. That's the kind of information we're looking for. That's not the kind of information that any person that just lives out in the county knows about their well. Well registrations would have that. The well drillers would have that information. This is our hydraulic report for that one well. It's 40, 50 pages worth of information. Takes a little bit of time to do this. October 29th, we were contacted, and to me, I was a little bit befuddled about how the county made it the onus of a private citizen to get private records from another private entity. That's like me asking you your monthly income. You know, that's your private. But to a government, the government deserves that because they have to do taxes based on that. But for me, to go out as a private citizen, ask another private citizen information about their well, I think that's dangerous. I mean, obviously, you heard in Ohio, a cleaning lady got shot because they went to a wrong house. I mean, people live in the county because they want to live in the county. They don't want people coming up to their door. I think it's very dangerous that the county government asked us to do that. No one has phone numbers anymore. No one has phone. But this is a letter that we worked really fast on as a supplemental information on the one information of the well that we do have. Based on the assumptions, that's in the same aquifer, based on the well, the depth of the well, that we can assume that this is going to be the same exact type of aquifer, same type of pump formation that we would have on the information that we provided on the other well. So based on our quick research on the existing well that we had, just matter of Monday, that the well hydrologist believes that this can be a reasonable assumption, that it will not affect that other well that we now have a little bit of information on, knowing that it's an assumption. That owner may or may not know what this information is. We are being asked to provide an engineered technical document that will reside with the permit, but it's based on information that is not registered, based on someone that is just going to assume what their well is. And so I, we feel that the denial is not really fair to the project. Maybe a conditional approval. The condition would be update the report, but the county wanted to keep going forward with the denial, which was kind of shocking to us. We have a long list of working with the county and the city, and we've always tried to get to a conditional approval. The county wanted to keep moving forward with the denial claim. So that's. I'm going to have Greg speak a little bit to about the operation of the mine and about his interaction with the two neighbors we were able to speak with.
Hi. My name is Greg Parrott. I'm the plant superintendent at Yankee Hill Brick, which is located at 3705 South Cottington Avenue. I tried to make contact with the four addresses that were listed as, you know, potentially having wells. One of them was definitely a trailer with a tree falling over the driveway that I could only pull in so far and had to walk around to go knock at it. And there's, it doesn't look like anybody's been there for quite some time. And then the address across the street, the 126, or Southwest 126th, had a "for sale" sign in the yard. So the house looks like it'd been empty for a while. I did make contact with one of the owners on the south side of A Street, and he was very puzzled as to why I was there. He seemed just apprehensive to why I was asking so many questions, and I explained to him what I was doing. But then he stated he had no idea about any of that information. So then I went to the other address, the 12755, and that couple was great. They had a little bit of information from when their pump was replaced. And that's, he said, that's the only reason they have it, is because, he wrote it down off of what they gave him when they replaced the pump. But they didn't have any of the logs or anything else that I had asked if they kept. And so they were, they were very friendly, and they gave me what little information they had. And then to talk about what Yankee Hill, we use that material on that site mostly for coatings. In the 70s, it was the main pit for the plant, but then they purchased the property over on West Claire, and then that was closer to the plant, so it was, you know, less expensive to get the clay to the site to make the product. This property, we've been asked several times by the Peening family, who owns all the property adjacent to it, if we would sell it back to them. And we've told them recently that, sure, let us get the material off that we can use, and then we'd be more than willing to sell it back to your family. We're going to use some of the material, obviously, for coatings. It's good sand. There's some red clay we'll probably, you know, eventually excavate that we'll make, you know, brick out of. And then some of it we will pile up, and we'll probably sell to concrete companies or other people that can utilize the various clays that are on that site that we don't use to make our brick. If you have any questions, you know, feel free.
What, what condition will you leave the land when you, when you're done excavating?
We will leave it, and most of it, there'll be a slight hole, and that will probably be filled with water, and then it'll be a pond for the Peening family.
That was at their request?
Yeah, they actually, they wanted the pond. They thought that would be kind of neat for their house.
And in other excavation questions that have been before us, some of the top soil was taken and stored onsite?
Yes.
And then, sorry, then there was a question of the, whether that would be replaced or just left as a mound?
Oh, no, we would redistribute it across the property to level it out, and then also put some and control the depth of the hole.
It's 12 acres, and you're going to use eight acres of it. Can you just show on the map where you plan to, which eight acres?
Yeah, most of the eight acres is right where you see this. This is the driveway up here, and it comes down. Most of the clay vein that we want is just right through, like a square in the middle.
Mm-hmm, great.
There's a drainage swell cut diagonally through the property that we're going to leave out of.
Leave it away, yeah. And then if you were to estimate on a peak day when all conditions are great and you're just going to town, how many trips of trucks going in and out?
If I was to guess, it would probably be, since it's such a drive to the other location, we would probably only use like four or five trucks, and then we'd probably make it most three trips a day. And then once we excavate a certain amount, and we get, you know, the size of pile we're looking for at the other location, we won't mine again until that pile's gone. So it's going to be very intermittent.
Okay.
Right, thank you. Testimony in support of the applicant? Testimony in a neutral position? Testimony in opposition? Staff questions?
Yeah.
Dick?
I'd like the Health Department person to come forward. Are you in a position to?
I need to find where.
Oh, sorry.
Chris Schroeder, excuse me, Health Department, 3131 O Street.
Sorry, Chris. Are you in a position to, within two weeks, have a report on, on that additional well that they have come up with?
I think we'd be amenable to that. I don't think I've seen the email or letter that Tim showed, if I could just take, take a look at, if I could take a look at that you showed. Where I think they talked about, there wouldn't be impacts for the well you have the information on.
Would it be logical that it would be in the same, same water group area as the one that has been identified?
Well, I mean, that, that would be something a groundwater hydrologist would comment on. If you look at the underlying geology, you can, you can make inferences relative to that.
Okay.
I mean, the concern with this would be if there was a well that was much shallower
Right.
than the other wells in the area, then you'd need to look at, at those potential impacts.
Okay.
Thank you.
And of the gentleman or the couple that, that don't have any information on their well, and it's a non-registered well, what do you do?
We, we are okay with that. I think we did, we did right that if they make an attempt to contact, you know, a property owner about their well, and they decline to provide information, even though it isn't their best interest to, then document that, and that's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions?
I think he's reviewing the, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Does that give you pause, or?
No, I think we're amenable to that if they agree to amend the groundwater report, you know, looking at the potential impact of the one well you did get the information on from the property owner.
So you would be okay?
Yes.
From a legal standpoint, yeah? And health standpoint?
Yeah.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Applicant rebuttal?
Melville?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, just one today. Hey, Tim, can you, within two weeks, come up with that report that he is mentioning?
Yes, in two weeks, we can come up with a report. What I'd like to do is, a lot of these items aren't just caked. We have a lot of other conditions we have to satisfy and go through. It's a conditional approval, so what I would rather see is if the county and Planning Department is okay with this, is we're on track to that, just to make that a condition of approval, and that we garner vote today, is, is what I'd really like to strive, so that we could keep having this move forward.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
On the county assessor's map, it will show on those vacant properties, or seemingly vacant property, who the current owner is.
Yep.
Have you made an attempt, possibly with a registered letter, to reach out to them wherever they are? And try to get the information?
So the, the address is the, the address of the property, so the ownership is the address on the actual property in the GIS, and, and.
No forwarding address.
No, yeah.
Yeah.
And so that was the hard part, and obviously, phone books aren't really relevant anymore. Wish they could be, but they're not on that. So the, really, the only way to really do that is go knock on a door. And like I said, two of the properties were vacant, and two of the properties, we were able to make contact, one gave shared information, one had no idea about their well information. And so that would be my rebuttal, is I would love to garner a conditional approval based on updating the hydraulic report with the additional well information that we have.
Thank you. Motion to close.
I would like to have asked Planning to come back up. Would you be in agreement with putting that as a condition of, of final approval?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I would move to close the public hearing.
Edens?
Campbell?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
And I would move to approve special permit 25042 conditionally, based upon the hydrological report that would be coming from the applicant for final approval.
I second, along with the additional conditions they already had listed, correct?
Right.
Second, Edens?
It makes a lot of sense to let them keep moving, inasmuch as they've attempted. And based upon what we heard from the Health Department, I also believe it's in the same water plane that, the one that was able to be identified. And I think that would be what they'll find out with the additional report that's written by Tim Gergen from Clark Anderson. And so I, rather than holding them up, I think we should give them conditional approval, and based upon the Planning Department and the Health Department receiving that additional information, as well as the other conditions.
I am never a huge fan of soil mining. They're, they're always kind of a, what do you do? I think they've owned this land for a very, a long time, from what I could tell. They've done it, we have no neighbors' complaints about it. It does look like some of those facilities are vacant, or at least hard, and they did attempt to go talk to them, and it would be a three-week delay over a two-week delay because of.
That's right.
So I think we're in the right move to approve it conditionally, get the one well checked out and added to the report. That's my opinion.
I agree.
Ready for a vote?
All right. All right, Campbell?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Fight?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Approved with the additional conditional approval.
All right, moving on.
Okay, item 4.4A, Conference of Plan Amendment 25006, to amend the Lincoln-Lancaster County 2050 Conference of Plan to revise the future land use map from residential low-density use to commercial use, and to adjust the future growth tier designation from Tier 1, Priority C, to Tier 1, Priority, Priority A, on property generally located on the southwest corner of South 70th and Yankee Hill Road. Associated with item 4.4B, Annexation 25008, to annex approximately 13.12 acres on property generally located on the southwest corner of South 70th and Yankee Hill Road, and associated item 4.4C, Change of Zone 05068I, an amendment to add approximately 13.12 acres and 161,000 square feet of commercial floor area to the existing planned use development for the woodlands at Yankee Hill PUD, and associated waivers, including waiver of the subdivision regulations for the minimal flood corridor on property located on the southwest corner of South 70th and Yankee Hill Road. I will note, a revised staff report memo dated November 10th was sent to Planning Commission members regarding revisions to the staff report for Annexation 25008 and Change of Zone 05068I. Are there any expedite communications to be disclosed on these items? Are there any expedite?
Mayor Bell? I visited this site since our first hearing, and I've also called up, pulled up the GSI and have reviewed the sites and each of the lots that were, would be associated or around this property, so.
You chatted with anyone?
I did not chat with anyone.
Okay.
Dick, we, we talked, traffic was concerned a couple of weeks ago. What time of day did you go and?
It was afternoon, and it would have been, before standing there would have been out. But the traffic was fairly light at that time.
Well, and for disclosure, I drive past this every single day. This is my, my way home from work. Okay, with that.
Hello again, Jacob Schlangy, Planning and Development Services Department, 555 South 10th Street. Obviously, I spoke about these three applications two weeks ago, just as a refresher. The three applications that we're looking at here, the first would be a comprehensive plan amendment to update the growth tier for this property, as well as to change the future land use from low-density residential to commercial. The second application is a PUD amendment that would add this property of approximately 13 acres to the existing woodlands at Yankee Hill PUD. And the third application- And the third application is the annexation of the property. So, just as a recap of kind of where we left things two weeks ago, there were a couple of things that were yet to be resolved with a couple of different city departments. You'll recall that one of the things that was mentioned during that meeting was a request of an additional waiver for the minimum flood corridor. After further discussions with watershed management and the applicant, there was a solution that was reached that would not actually require the waiver, because one of the ways that that requirement could be addressed was through mitigation to the east of 70th Street. And so, that is part of what you'll see reflected in the updated staff report, that the updated conditions that were provided by watershed management, which include that mitigation to the east of 70th. The other question that was kind of up in the air the last time that we discussed this application was the temporary right turn onto Yankee Hill, which would be located right here. That was something that there were a couple of additional conversations about, and ultimately, LTU is supportive of approving the temporary right out, and currently would require that the paving of South 70th Street be bid before any building permits be approved on this location. So, the justification behind that really being that it would mean that there really is some momentum moving forward, that the construction of South 70th Street is moving forward, so that we're not looking at a long extended period with that temporary right out. So, those are the things that were kind of left up in the air during the last meeting, and those are the things that have been, the solutions that have been reached, and the updated staff report memo that you received on Monday reflects those changes.
Thank you. Testimony from the applicant, please.
Good afternoon, Christina Melgoza with Kruger Development, 8501 South 78th Street. And as always, Jacob does a great job, so I have very little extra to cover. But in addition to working with the departments on that temporary right out, the minimum flood corridor item, the other issue that we're working on internally is, I know we had some thoughts from abutting neighbors, asking if there was any help that we could do with landscape screening. And actually, I was out of town last week, Rick Kruger is out of town this week, but I have spoken with him, and he would like to move forward with talking to those four abutting neighbors, and offering some sort of screening that we can plant on their property. We have no definitive amount or value at this time, but I think between now and a council appearance, that we would be able to meet with those individuals and offer them something to help with that.
Good afternoon, Rick Onam with ANA Consulting, 2077 N Street. Just kind of to highlight what Jacob said, I'll kind of point some things out on a plan. If you recall last...
Just a second, it has to come up yet.
Oh, there it is. If you recall, last week, or last couple of weeks ago, we were talking about this area in here, which was, according to the drainage area upstream, is eligible or requires a minimum flood corridor protection. The discussions that we had with LTU Watershed, we will be making improvements to, there's a drainage channel along the east side of 70th Street, we'll be making improvements to that channel as the mitigation for this, which will allow us not to require that minimum flood corridor in that area. That is, as Jacob mentioned, that is a approved process within the zoning code, and so it does not require the waiver. So, that's kind of where we landed there. Beyond that, answering any questions?
In my, in looking at that, and being in the nursery business, of the four acreages that are really most impacted by that, would you be willing to build your retaining wall 20 foot off the property line rather than 10 foot? It would mean just more of a straight-up-and-down wall, rather than the step-back that you've shown us in the pictures. But it would also protect the root systems of many of those trees along there, to where I don't think you'd have much replacement, if any.
I'm like, I'm gonna let Rick answer that question, because I think that's gonna impact our current building envelopes quite a bit.
Right, I guess I would say our building envelopes are pretty tight on this site, as it is already. And, let's see if I got anything that, anything with me that's gonna show that very...
My green dots are the property owners that I will speak with about said trees.
Unfortunately, I can't put my hands quickly on a site plan that's gonna show that. Maybe you can zoom in on this.
This one.
So, the building envelopes that we have along that corridor, along that western property line, this is the building envelope. There are requirements in terms of that envelope, that door swings and those kinds of things stay within that envelope. So, we've kind of necked those down as small as we can, in order to fit the buildings that we want there. We also need to facilitate drainage off the back of the roof, and get some swales in at the base of the retaining wall. So, that's why we're showing the wall in the manner that we are. There are areas where we can get by with a single wall, there are areas where we're gonna need a stepped wall.
Well, if you pull up that picture.
Can we borrow yours?
Yeah. Yeah, the wall, if you'll pull it down just a little bit, the wall is shown there as stepping back at difference, and then you're showing two shelf elements down to your drainage area.
Yeah, so I'd say, this is, I don't know what to call this, this view. The way this is generated is it creates a vertical, essentially, the surface looks like it's a vertical differential at each contour. In reality, that will be a smooth transition between each contour, so, mind if I draw on that?
No, go right ahead.
No, I think they're a footstep down.
And that's to create your drainage wall?
Right.
That you're talking about.
The ground line is gonna look more like that. The wall is this piece back here.
And what's that right in front? Is that, in the yellowish, that's part of the wall?
Show the wall again, just the two parts of the wall.
Yeah, so, this is part of the wall, and then, actually, I think the way he's got this shown, it's a single wall on the entire frontage.
So, it's not stepped back at that top piece?
There will be probably at least one area where we'll have it stepped, or eight areas where it'll just be a single wall.
So, it's straight up and down, single wall, and that's 10 foot off the property line?
Yes.
Okay.
And that height will vary along the...
Right. And you'll have, you'll have to have the tiebacks into the wall at that height?
Depending on type of...
Material.
Material we use. If we're using the larger block, which is what we're intending to do, it's likely that we may not need grid behind it.
Okay. The reason I ask that, and if you don't mind putting these up, that first one, the first one shows which properties go, I put that first map, that...
The one without color, just the black and white one?
These are the, yes, those are the four properties, if you pull it up a little bit, that have, especially 8900 is one that had objections. And if you go through those drawings, and I've written the addresses on each one... That's right around, that's the one that you would go into, as I understand. That one, you would purchase.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so that one I'm not worried about. Okay, there's the 8900 South 68th, and you'll note the trees that are extensively, that are over the boundary line, over the property line. And that would remove some of the screening form, it would still leave some that's on their property, much of which is deciduous. The evergreens, though, pines and spruce and fir, will generally have, there's cedars in there too, but generally, they'll have a width of root system that's not as wide as a deciduous tree. But they, and they basically only have a two-to-three-foot-deep root system. So, by, my request to step a wall back as far as possible from that would allow, would eliminate some of the root damage that could occur, and would preserve most of the screening along there. The peonies that they worried about, they could be moved early next spring, before any work is done of grading in that area. So, that's not really a problem, because the peonies are over on your property, not on, or the property you are purchasing, not on their lot. So, they would have to move those. But the trees themselves, if we can figure out some way to make that wall be as far away from, and then if you go to the other two lots, which are on the west side of, and you can see that tree line is really right along their property line there, and that's on the 68th Street, which is where your wall is moving north and south there. There again, if there was some way to move that wall further away, there's less chance of the, because most of those are evergreens along there, and then if you go to the other one, that's just north of that, and you'll see there that there's deciduous on your side of the lot, and then there's both evergreen and deciduous, but quite a bit of deciduous on their lot. Theirs winds a little further away from the lot line, so there would probably be less damage to root system in those situations than there would be on the 8600, one and the others. So, that was my questioning on the, on the, if the wall could be put in the wall further away.
Okay, and I apologize, I don't have a copy of the grading plan with me, but let me...
And all of those lots slope towards your property?
Correct.
In that area, so you're gonna have water coming off of their properties?
Correct.
Behind your wall?
Right, and so, we will be collecting that and piping it?
Okay.
Through the wall. I will say this, I guess we'll start kind of at the north and work south. The grade here is not changing much.
Okay.
So, I don't remember exactly where the wall starts, but I don't believe there's even a wall needed at this end.
The least amount at that end, for sure.
Yeah. As we continue, continue moving south, again, these trees, again, you said deciduous, look to be on the other adjacent property. The canopy looks to be outside, or, you know...
In the case of...
We're 10 feet off, we're outside of the canopy.
Yeah, in the case of deciduous trees, though, the root system, again, is within, 90% of it's within the top three foot of the soil. But in a deciduous tree, the root system will go out two-to-three times the height of the tree, where on an evergreen, it stays in tighter. Can it survive if the roots are cut? Yeah, it may need some attention as far as watering and stuff like that in the first couple of years, to get its roots going again. But it would eliminate, probably destroying some of those deciduous trees. And there's an evergreen there that is right on the lot line, that probably, regardless, would need some screening to replace it.
Correct, and I think, as the applicant had testified, that they are willing to work with the homeowners.
But the evergreens are 20-to-30-foot tall in those areas, and you're not gonna replace a 20-to-30-foot-tall evergreen.
Understand. Again, you know, if we're looking at this, and we're 10 foot off of the property line, we're 10 foot basically beyond the canopy of those evergreens.
Yeah, canopies I'm not worried about, it's the width of the root system.
Right. But that's, I guess typically, as we talk about grading, if we were grading outside of the canopy, we're concerned with damage to the root systems. So, and again, not having the grading plan with me, I can't show you the details of how much grade difference we're talking about in each one of those areas.
Off the top of your head, what would you remember?
I know, I think our maximum wall height was approaching eight feet in one area. That was a pretty localized area. And then, it's a less...
Be decreasing.
In each direction, right?
Yeah.
The one area on, sorry, on this property...
Yeah.
So, this area over here would be part of the development, that's actually, would be on the side of one of the buildings.
Okay.
And our footprint is pretty tight in that particular area. So, that would be right here. And again, we're planning on the wall to be 10 foot off the property.
That one's a little greater.
This area along, as we continue north, this wall section is fairly short.
Okay. And there's not as much screening down in that area anyway. If you want to lift it up to the, no, the other way. No, I'm sorry, go ahead and put that map back up, now lift it up, keep going north.
North.
Oh, yeah, that's around about, and then pull up further south, to the end of your development, there you go. And it's, and pull it up just a hair more, no, the other way. And you've got those on that backside there too, those two?
So, yes, the wall through this... So, yes, the wall through this area is pretty short.
Okay.
We're matching grade back down here because there's some drainage that will come through there. There will be a swale, drainage swale. So there's a short section of wall in this area. And then it tends to get taller as we get. I think that the highest point of the wall is somewhere back in here. Highest point of the wall will be somewhere in this range, and then it'll taper off in either direction.
I have a question, Mayor Bell. Do existing fire codes or just building codes require on a commercial building that the door swings outward?
Yes.
Yes.
You have any questions?
I don't think so.
All right then, let's move into testimony in support.
Good afternoon, counsel. My name is William Collins, and I live at 6801 Yankee Hill Road, which is one of the subject properties to the north. So I wanted to make sure that when we were dealing with the acquisition of our property, first and foremost, I've always felt like we've been a good neighbor. We've been there for 40 years. And there's probably no one in the neighborhood that has seen more changes than I've seen. My wife and I raised our family there. The, you know, certainly acknowledge the concerns of neighbors. Every time we've had some change to our property via acquisition of property for easements, power lines, gas pipeline, roadways, a roundabout being put in my garden, which is in this area over here. And it was thought best, the reason why the engineers thought best for that was that this area, as E&amp;A has indicated, is the area where the water sloping down this way, they didn't want the roundabout in the waterway. So that made sense to us. And although it took my garden and a lot of trees, I've always kind of felt like that it needs to be the greatest good for the greatest number. And obviously, we all make sacrifices along the way. Nothing ever stays the same. My kids went to Chaney School, that's not there anymore. I always remind them of that, that that's how old they are. And I think that all of that, you know, that really change is inevitable. I mean, the mere fact that we have a planning department and a planning board commission indicates that there will be changes. And in our situation, I know some of the concerns were the traffic flows. I was not a fan of roundabouts before, I am now. Instead of seeing roughly one accident a month down there, and knowing a fair number of LPD officers, you know, and partly because, you know, there's wrecks, were wrecks down there. Because there was a stop sign on Yankee Hill Road. And traffic would back clear up almost to 56th Street, it seemed like. Now with the roundabout, there's a free and steady flow of traffic. I really think that even with the schools, the neighborhood schools that are there, it's been very accommodating for that traffic flow going in and out of the neighborhoods. And I think that certainly the screening issues are a big issue. And having once cut my teeth for my gardening habits that I, although I went a different direction professionally, and I work on the four legged, I much appreciated my time at Campbell's Nursery and Garden Center, Bob and Ellen Camel. And one of the things that I have always enjoyed doing is planting screenings and things. And so I did take, and have for many years, walks along the boundaries. I can speak to this area here, I planted some-
One more minute.
I planted some oak trees and some things there, but unfortunately, oak wilt has caused them some problems. And so most of these trees are on my neighbor's property. What I have there are, you know, I hate to call them trash trees, but it's everything from ash trees with emerald ash borer, Austrian Scotch pine, a few of those which are gone. And then also, there's a lot of what, well, I won't say what my mom called them, but they're the Siberian, or Elms, and they just don't have a good long life. I really think that of the properties, that my wife and I's property boundary, and of course, there's the cedars, which unfortunately have infected my pasture and made it a little more difficult as a beekeeper. So anyway, I do think that we stand, my wife and I, in approval of the recommendations by the planning department. Any questions?
Thank you for coming today.
Thank you.
Do we have any testimony in a neutral capacity?
I have some questions.
Oh, support.
I would have a support.
Oh, you have a support, so ma'am, hold on just one second.
Okay.
Support trumps neutral.
It's just the order.
The order, it's okay.
I'll be brief. Good afternoon, my name is Carol Collins, and I live at 6801 Yankee Hill Road with him. And like you said, we've been there for about 37 years. Just a few things I wanted to point out today. I know one of the big concerns is the traffic in that area. And the concern that the office space would add to, especially the school traffic that already exists. And just, and this may be a dur statement, but just to kind of point out that this is not a concern 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. Most days, this will only be a problem in the morning, and in the afternoon, and only when school is in session. It's been my experience that traffic has increased morning and afternoon in any neighborhood where there is a school or multiple schools. In addition, the developer is addressing this problem by limiting how the traffic enters and leaves the development. I would also like to reiterate that the developer has gone to some great length to design buildings that will have as little impact as possible on the surrounding neighborhood. The buildings are all single story and are designed at a lower level than surrounding homes so that the windows do not allow visual access into the neighboring homes. There is minimal safety lighting on the backs of the buildings to keep any light pollution to a minimum. Sidewalks are also a part of the plan to assist with pedestrian safety. From our meetings with the developer, we feel that this will be a quality professional development with good upkeep and a real asset to the neighborhood. One final thing I would like to point out is that this is the only remaining corner of 70th and Yankee Hill Road intersection that is not owned by a developer of some type. For those of us that live in this area, development has been slowly creeping out to us for years. Change is difficult, but a part of life. I would like to ask you, the members of the planning commission, to please approve the proposals for the development of the Woodlands at Yankee Hill. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out today. Testimony in a neutral capacity, please.
My name is Barb Peterson, and I live at 8501 South 68th. The acreage across the road to the east from me is up against their property. So needless to say, I have some concerns about it. I didn't make it to the last meeting, and so I wanted to be here today. So I would just like to know what kind of building is going to be going on there?
Is the binder up there that she can have access to?
Yep. It'd be.
And I don't know where to look, so.
Here, this will help, I could give you some of my pictures.
My property was on that picture that you had there. I just have some concerns.
Here's what, here's what there.
I'm right across the street here. So I just would like to know what's going to go on there. Is there going to be a McDonald's there, or is there going to be? I mean, we already got a lot of traffic yesterday. I took my puppy to get groomed in Hickman, and I had to go out the south way, and there was vehicles lined up, clur down south a long ways. I couldn't have gotten out that way. And on Yankee Hill, in the mornings, there's vehicles backed up, clur up over the hill because of the roundabout. And the same way at five o'clock in the afternoon. You can't even really get out of our neighborhood because of that. And I would invite any of you to come out there and see for yourself. So you don't think I'm making it up?
I drive it every day, ma'am. I'm literally 70th, all the way down into Hickman, so I drive it every single day. And I sit in that roundabout more often than I'd like.
Yes, yes, and there are accidents down there because I can hear from crashing and lots of sirens. There's lots of people racing down 70th Street, that there probably should be a few cop cars out there.
This is the staff report that outlines the application.
But I want, yeah, so I just kind of want to know what's going to be built out there.
You're welcome to ask the, yeah, there's photos, there's photos right here on the screen in the IC. It just kind of shows you what it looks like and, yep.
But it will be homes.
Sorry, it seems strange to talk to you in the mic when I would just normally stand next to you and talk.
Talk to you. Well, I was not prepared to get up here and talk today, but I have questions and concerns, and I want answers.
And I think it would be a great opportunity for the two of you to take this offline since we are trying to get through this.
Yes, that applicant, or that packet that Jacob just gave you will have more details in it, but I can talk to you individually.
Is this the packet that you mailed to me?
Well-
So I have it then.
Okay.
I have it then.
But it would be nice to just converse, I think, for you guys.
And you're welcome to take those three pictures to do it.
Okay, okay. Because, yeah, I talk to the neighbors all around. In fact, I'm surprised more neighbors aren't here, but they're not, so, but I'm here. And I'd like some answers.
Well, I won't be leaving until we're done, so I will.
Okay. If you stick around, I'll stick around.
All right. So can I have these in even your maps? Okay. And I just want to say, my son used to mow their back acreage.
Do we have any more testimony in a neutral capacity? Testimony in opposition, yes, please.
Hello, I'm Beth Briney, I live at 8900 South 68th Street. And I am opposed to this change in zoning. A commercial development at this location does not fit with the residential nature of the area. And the construction plan would remove the many trees that now provide a buffer to the noise and light pollution that has developed in this area. Yankee Hill Road and 70th Street are already heavily burdened with traffic due to the increased residential developments on the north side of Yankee Hill, and those that are on the south side and east of Yankee Hill. So changing zoning once in this area makes it more likely that future zoning changes could be made. So that's a problem. I did, I do have a drone picture that I'll show you, if I can figure out exactly how this works.
It'll come up.
That takes a little bit.
There we go.
And start, there it is.
So you can see, there are a lot of trees. I know somebody asked last time, are there trees there? Yes, there are a lot. And I show the neighborhood because I want you to think about the fact that we are not just talking about a piece of property. We're not just talking about trees. We're talking about families who have lived there a long time. The rate of change within that neighborhood, the direct neighborhood, is very slow and very limited. Properties don't come up very often. And when you are making those decisions, you're not just making them about this particular adjacent area. There are neighborhoods like this, all the way south to Sotelo, all the way west to 56th, and then from 56th on west to about, I think, 48. If you come up going north on 56th, there are a lot of acreage developments, neighborhood developments, that are from 56th to probably around, gosh, 44th, 46th. It's hard to tell, you know, once you don't have regular street names or numbers in there. So we're not just talking about one specific neighborhood. We're talking about a whole area out there that has been developed in a very specific way. And one of my major concerns is not just for this specific development change, but it seems to me that every time there is one zoning change in an area, it leads to another. It makes it easier to change for the next zoning change. So does that mean that there eventually will be strip mall all the way along the 70th corridor, 70th Street corridor? That doesn't sound very positive for the neighborhoods in that area, both directly in that area and further west of that area. Thank you for asking about the trees, Mr. Campbell, we appreciate that. This is, oh, is this the one I wanted? Here we go. Now, it's easy to think about a flat map and not know exactly where everything is going. This is 70th Street, and you'll notice a lot of these trees there. This is Yankee Woods Drive, which is, this is where they are planning or proposing a roundabout at that position right there. And then there, excuse me?
One more minute remaining for your time.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, well, I'll hurry up. Then this area up here, there, you notice there are trees here. Now, our trees that we have along this property area, and the peonies are on our ground. Now, our trees that we have along this property area, and the peonies are on our land, by the way, are a lot of maples and oaks, as well as cedars and pines. And those would be affected, I think, very much by any kind of problems with the roots. At one time, change does happen, we know that, but when we first moved out there, we were one of the first area, in that area. And Yankee, excuse me, 70th was a dirt road, and there was a trestle bridge that went over 70th, and it would flood underneath that trestle bridge, and there would be, like, dirt bikers and whatever running through there. So that's been a long time that we've been there. We've seen a lot of change, but most of it has been in a residential nature. A lot of houses, thousands of houses, and townhouses. There are two apartment dwellings that have been, one that is directly across on 70th and Rebel Drive, and another within the Yankee Woods area that is in construction right now. I need to stop.
One more minute.
Okay. Well, and Yankee Hill, as you go east from 70th Street, that is becoming quite commercialized. There are a lot of commercial buildings along that area, and there are plans for two more. A large portion of the northeast corner, or the southeast corner, and one across 70th Street on the other side of Yankee Hill, on the northwest corner. So there's a lot going on here. And this becomes a network of connections and travel throughout that whole area that is increasing again and again and again. So the other concern I have, or one of the others, is that it is, the last I heard, it was going to be zoned with an H4 designation. My understanding is that can be anything that you put there.
That's time.
And that would be a problem.
Thank you for bringing your concerns forward and being here today.
May I have one other thing to say? I want to say thank you for the really good questions that everybody is asking. And my last comment was, who will speak for the trees? Thank you.
He absolutely will.
Any other testimony in opposition?
All right. Staff questions? Do we have questions for staff? Applicant rebuttal.
Well, I know it's been brought up that this is becoming quite a hotspot for commercial development, and I would agree and say that's not a bad thing. So I think this is the last corner to be called out for a commercial spot at 70th and Yankee Hill. It makes sense to us, based on the topography and how it's so much lower than the residential neighbors around us, to put something there. As a developer, and I mentioned this a couple weeks ago, that we have gone through several iterations of, could this be self-storage? Could this be apartments? For us and for the sellers, for it to economically work, this is our plan of moving forward, in a way that we think is the least offensive with single-story buildings to the neighbors. I will do my absolute best to save trees, but I don't know if I can move that wall. So again, I know when Rick Krueger is back in town, we've had other developments where I've met with 30, 40, 50 neighbors to put trees on their side of the property. Actually, Big Red Storage is an example of one of those, where there was a lot of neighbors off of about 84th and Van Doren several years ago, where I did work with everyone to do that. So it's definitely something we've done before, and we can definitely do again. I know I can't plant a 30-foot tree, but I can definitely, I can definitely get something there. I mean, in addition to that, we see a great demand based on where our Krueger Development Office is, off of 70th and Yankee Hill, for, you know, operator-owned offices. We're essentially almost sold out of what we have near us, and that's why that is something that we think would fit very niche into this area, work for us, work for neighbors, work for the city itself, in trying to come up with something that is the most cohesive and least offensive to the neighbors. So we would ask for your support in that.
I don't know that I have a whole lot to add to that. I guess I'll just say, we recognize that as a city grows, we bump into these established acreage developments, and it's a change in their lifestyle, and we recognize that. I think developers trying to be a good neighbor as best they can, recognizing that it's going to be a different use. And obviously, these arterial intersections tend to be the most logical place to put commercial development.
I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Edens.
Campbell.
Yes.
Edens.
Yes.
Byatt.
Yes.
Rodenberg.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes.
Public hearing closed.
I'll make a motion on the first one, but I'd like to be able to discuss all three at one time. Is that okay, Ms. Chair?
I think we can do that.
Okay. I would move that we approve Comprehensive Plan Amendment 25006.
Second, Edens.
And as discussion on that, when we get to the change of zone, I do want to add the condition, even though she said that Krueger was agreeable to putting trees in, I want to set some parameters if trees have to be removed and the screening's removed and damaged. And also, I won't put it as a necessary amendment, but to encourage them to move that wall as far away from the property lines as possible. And that will also benefit them by not having to replace trees along there.
I guess I'll just say, change is hard, and this is tough. My parents still live in the house I grew up in, 40 years now. They have development. They always lived at a dead end. Then they had to deal with it being punched through and houses being...I mean, it is. It's scary, it's crappy. I know that it could be worse, and that's unfortunate that we have to maybe make that decision, but I do agree with the developer that they're trying to make it as less affecting the neighborhood as they can. And I'm very appreciative of the conversations that are being had with the neighbors, and I hope that continues.
I agree. They could have put probably three-story apartment buildings in there. And I think what they have proposed is probably best-case scenario for that property. It's probably not sellable for anything else.
Along two arterial streets like that, and I know 40 years ago, they were not, and that's kind of how change happens over a few decades, but along two arterial streets, this would be the type of development I would want there particularly. And yes, I would be devastated to watch the trees come down, so do everything you can to save the trees. But we'll let Dick be the Lorax today and...
The Lorax, I love it.
I would mention also that all three other corners of that intersection are zoned commercial.
Yep.
So that follows what's happened in the city, is that the commercial developments are on the corners, so...
I also agree with the latest staff memo that we want the roundabout at least bid out before we give them access on that right turn, and that we have some type of deadline on when that's going to be done, and this isn't a, oh, we granted you access temporarily, and that's a decade long.
Yeah.
Let's get it moving and get it done.
It's important stipulation.
Yep.
Send your piece. All right. Shelley? Will you please call the vote?
Campbell?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Byatt?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Approved five to zero.
And I would move that we approve the Annexation 25008.
A second, Edens.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Byatt?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Approved five to zero.
And I move that we approve the Change of Zone 050681 with an additional amendment that any trees that get removed, that the screening removes, that they replace with evergreen, either pine spruce or fir, on 20-foot spacings of however long the opening is.
Need a second to the amendment?
Second, Edens, sorry.
The reason for the...and I should, I want to back up a minute, and that is that the replacements be six to eight foot in height at the time of installation.
Are we in discussion? Over there, right? Yeah, okay. My only pause was, I don't know that we should specify type of tree.
The reason...
I understand the logics of that, but I think we say pine spruce or fir. A lot, and that's beat my preference not to.
Yeah, well, basically, I don't want deciduous going in there, because that's not going to provide the screen that they need. And so that's why I specify evergreen.
I would just like to leave it to the adjacent landowner to have a conversation with the developer to pick those trees. That would be my...
That's possible.
We're getting, yeah, we're getting caught in the minutia here.
Steve Hendrickson with the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. So let me see if I can try to get some clarity. The property owner is going to be required to plant a screen that is required under the screening and landscaping requirements. And that screen is that up to a 10-foot of height, they have to cover at least 60% of that. Now, that can be new trees, or fencing, or however that is accomplished, and that is usually something that is submitted as a part of a building permit plan. So in this site, let's say within that 20 feet closest to the adjacent properties, trees are removed. There's nothing here that normally requires you have to save a tree and use it as a screening tree. So you could come in and grade the site, and put up your retaining wall, and then put up your screening requirement. So I was trying to understand, Dick, are you, when you're talking about replacing trees, they're allowed to remove the trees, but they'd have to show that they have this screen at time of building permit? So that's already a requirement.
That's correct, except that if they cut the roots too much on the property owner's trees, it would kill those trees and open up the screen. And so what I heard from the developer was that they were willing to talk to the neighborhood, neighbors, if that happened. And all I'm saying is, if it does happen, then the replacement tree should be evergreen on the neighbor's...
The developer offered, I think, was to say to, for the adjacent neighbors, before the city council, we're willing to help you plant trees on your property, on the residential property, and that would be something in addition to the requirement that's already by the city. Because the challenge for the city is, is if they come in and plant, you know, do their grading, and then two years later, a tree dies, it's very difficult for us to know why did the tree die? And so we would, it'd be a very big challenge for us, particularly along here, where there's a long, you know, that is, trees are dying on the other side of the property line, on the residential property line, for us to identify why that was caused. And so I think it'd be difficult for us to enforce a condition that said, oh, if trees die on the adjacent property, you have to replace them. Because what I think their offer is, which is not part of the conditions, but their offer was, we'll just provide them funds to plant some additional trees on their own property.
In other words, Steve, what you're saying is, we're voting on as it's written?
Well, that's my suggestion. It sounds like you...do we already have a vote?
We don't have a vote.
We don't have a vote yet.
We're on discussion.
We're on discussion, okay.
But basically, in that case, the developer would have to put up a screen on their 10-foot of property setback, and then their willingness to work with the neighbors if they were to lose trees should be sufficient.
And just to clarify, as part of your conditions, typically, the setback is 50 feet. The applicant had asked for it to be 30 feet. So as drafted, the setback between any parking or buildings has to be at least 30 feet from the property line to the nearest building or parking. And that, in that 30 feet, they can do grading and all the rest of it, but there must be at least 30 feet setback from any parking to that property.
And I would ask, this is, can't be included in the motion also, but I would ask that the developer review their plans to see how far away they can move that wall to protect as many trees as possible. And that's just a personal request.
So do we need to amend your motion?
No, yeah, we'll just remove the amendment.
There you go.
Remove.
I will second that, if you need it. That's Edens.
Okay. Now, can we start with the revised amended how we want it motion, please?
So it would be Change of Zone 050681, as it reads.
A second, Edens.
Okay. Campbell?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Byatt?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
Approved five to zero.
At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. Shall we?
I move that we adjourn.
A second, Edens.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edens?
Yes.
Byatt?
Yes.
Rodenberg?
Yes.
Cruz?
Yes.
We are adjourned.